For the June 12th meeting. There's Adam.
Hi.
And for July 10th.
Oh, it's true.
Okay. All right, I've promised not to drone on too long for the mayor's report, but it's been an eventful summer for Barbara and I. And the water system, so. Actually, before I go to that, one thing I did want to highlight from the summer was we did have our first ice cream social in a long time in August, and it was around 30 folks who showed up. But I wanted to thank Deb and Drew and Gail in particular for helping get that open ice and place this. That's the event, we had a nice turnout, but like just the sort of thing we hope happens in a small town. Thank you for that. Now, for the more mundane things, just making the town run, as many of you saw on paper or saw as you were driving by, we had, you know, at the beginning of the summer in July, during one of the closed periods, we started a process for evaluating the valves in the water system in town, which we had not done in a very long period of time. We made it all the way to the second valve and then had a problem, a rather dramatic one, which is the, not to get too technical, but the bond at the top of the valve, one of the bolts in that broke, it was a problem we knew we had, so it was likely we'd encounter it with one of the other valves. Unfortunately, that led to a, when we went to isolate and repair the valve, we realized that we were not able to cut down the flow of water in town low enough to be able to fix the valve. So, working with contractors, we were able to insert a new valve of the water tank, and we were able to do that without interrupting the water service in the town using a wet tap method. Once we did that, we were then able to, so we had almost a month there, but we were finally able to turn off water entirely in town and repair the valve that Harris Hollow. Over the next couple, between now and Christmas, we're going to schedule to repair, replace two other valves in town as we sort of march through this, we're going to do both of those as wet taps, so there will not be any interruption of service in town. After Christmas, in sort of a quiet time in the middle of winter, I feel sorry if the guys can't take this hold, but we will do two more valves in town, but those will be the more traditional routes, we will have to, I turn off some of the water service in town, we'll do those two repairs. But once we've got all those valves replaced, it really sets us up to be able to start marching through a few other valve replacements and repairs in town, be able to really isolate the town. So, in the future, whether there is a leak, it's not a matter of water in town being on or off, it's a matter of isolating different parts of town to address those leaks. So, I think we're on a good path there. Barbara, please correct me, or feel free to add on to that.
I'm just, I always am hearing these nonsense.
Yes. Let's see. We are looking into some grants, grants for repairs to water systems that will help us pay for that, but I don't want to steal the thunder of our esteemed treasurer talking about finances in the town, but we are looking at some options that would help us underwrite those repairs because they're not, not operating the valve, we've been able to manage it within the budget so far. I'm happy to have any additional help we can from the Commonwealth or from the federal government to continue that process. I think, big things. We, one other thing just to highlight, we will be having another meeting of the economic development authority for town on the 27th of September. I think you've seen the announcement in the town emails and in the paper, the call for applications for that, so we hope to have, we've had a few inquiries already, look forward to hopefully being able to consider some folks, some businesses at our September meeting. I know Gail, thoughts on that? All right, Jane. So, I think that's it for the mayor's report. Anyway, I'll turn over to the gentle lady to talk about the town's finances.
Before you, you have 13 pages that I'm going to go over line by line, and you sit here with me. In other words, no, I'm not. Thank you. Email me, call me if you have any questions on it. I do want to remind you that this is un-audited, and that's really a critical part, because once the auditors get it, because we're on a cash basis of how we do our books, once they get in there, there might be something that should have been, not should have been, but we may have paid in July, but they wanted to look back at June to mess with our fiscal years and mess with our books. So, this is un-audited, but it's pretty close, anything.
Just a reminder, for those folks who are not usually watching, our fiscal year begins July.
Our fiscal year, July on the 2nd through June. So, that's that.
And actually, Gail, I do have another question, because what I did was just go through and see where it was way above or way below.
Sure.
But I can just email you if that is what you prefer.
Yes, it's water.
There are not too many. General income, just page two. Barbara, helpfully, comment about what L G I P stands for, but still, something within 3,666% above the past, you see.
This is truly incredible.
Yeah.
Because back when we did it, the budget way, way, way down. The interest rate, interest we were getting was like half a percent, it was just not even worth my pay, including the numbers. And then, all of a sudden, the.
Thanks to the Federal Reserve.
Thanks to the Federal Reserve. Interest rates, clam. I look at these reports, I say, no, because I get the statements every month, we can't be getting $1,000 worth of interest, or whatever it was. And it's incredible, because all because of the Federal Reserve, the interest rates going up so high. We got.
Do you know what the corpus is that we have in the L G I P? How much funds?
Yeah, we have 391,000 change.
So, some of those 40,000, so that makes sense.
Yeah. So, and we're getting there, we're a third of the way there. We really need to have a year's worth in there. So, the goal is a million plus. The state guidelines is six months, but I don't think any of us are happy with that. So, we're just going to keep filling. If you want to forget to call the L G I P, our esteemed mayor calls it the rainy day fund, which I think is much easier to people.
But for the general public, it's life and safety, can't it?
It's the local government investment pool. The state of Virginia has put this pool together that us small towns with limited resources can invest money. So, it's up there for emergencies, and right now, they need a lot of money. So, I don't, any of you think you're going to touch it? Uh-uh.
Then on page three, printing, this is small, it was up 379%.
Those were the maps, those were the walkies.
Okay. And then, my final one was about, on page four, consultants, which were up 1,631%.
Oh, that, we will be reimbursed a good portion of that, right Barbara?
We have been reimbursed, that was for engineering services, for the rush river recycling, so we have been reimbursed for this.
Okay.
On the water, and which water, as you all know, and we discussed it, that we are mandated to do an annual review of the water and sewer systems. So, Barbara will be commencing on doing a water and sewer assessment, and hopefully have it done for our December meeting. The last water assessment was done in January of 2017, the last sewer assessment was done in January of 2022. Now, this does not mean that we're going to go, I'm not sitting here and saying, oh, we're going to increase this by 5,000, or whatever. This is just a, we have to review, see where we're at, and it's part of our long-term planning that we really need to look at on an annual basis. So, that's Barbara's. The only other thing I have is that we do need to approve the transfer, the release of the quarterly funds, so that we can care about this. For those of you who don't know, instead of doing this very win-taking, onerous thing of approving every single bill that comes across the desk, it's only $10 like we used to, we now release funds quarterly out of the budget for what we need, so Barbara can just go ahead and pay the bills at this meeting. But I could make a motion to release the quarterly funds. Try it again.
Second.
How was in favor?
All in favor.
I just can't see it.
All in favor. Aye.
That's good for the paper.
Mr. Cram.
Yes, sir. Two items to report on for you tonight, both regarding Rush River Conlins. One is the boundary line adjustment package I have now received from the attorneys for Nuck River. This is to adjust the boundary line in Rappahannock County. I have not had to interrupt, the county invited us up preparing for a three-day trial, which was last week, and so I'm still digging out from last week. But I let Mr. Goth know that I had gotten a draft, and so he's announced that and indicated that they're part of getting it from us. So, I hope to have that in good shape for you all to see after the next meeting to take action on, approving, sending it over to the county for their review. Second item I want to talk to you about tonight is with regard to the conservation easement. I believe the only thing that is still pending from that was a letter from Mr. Garrison, and so if that letter has gone out that I haven't seen, then that conservation easement can move forward and be recorded to preserve that area in accordance of the term of the conservation easement. So, I look to report, I'm ready to answer your questions.
This is the, for the boundary line adjustments, this is the final step before that, we'll send it off to the panel to review it.
Right, it goes to, the county approves it, then it would go to the Commission on Low Development, and then, or approved by the county. The only reason why we have to go through that much, that many steps is because the county wanted to have a permanent restriction on the rezonations of properties residential, so that necessitates an additional order.
Mr. Garrison's not here this evening, but we have his report in his, in the packet. I'm not sure I can comment thoughtfully on it, but if you have any questions.
Barbara, do you have any thoughts on the procedure book? There's a lot of stuff going on. That's all we'll do today.
Anything on the planning commission? The I R B?
Yes, we last month approved some railing and drainage changes for what is now our new waters, so the outdoor plants, as well as the railings on the outside balconies. We also have three applications coming up for our I R B meeting next week, which I think is detailed in the zoning administrator's report. And we did have an opening that said on the I R B, do they need new lines? So, we have some applications for that, which are on the agenda for later. I'll just note he was our secretary, so we'll also be able to make a motion to invoke for a new secretary once we have each number for that I R B.
All right, to old business, steps at 322 Main Street, it's the biggest update there, is the fact that there is a new owner of the property. We are discussing for what the options are to address that, show us the future of that property, so more to follow. Sidewalk, okay.
So, I had the, an opportunity to have a planning person from VDOT, as well as the local VDOT representative come out to Little Washington, and we walked the entire length of Warren Avenue. I also invited Mr. Curry, the county administrator, to join us, and we also did a walk around, sidewalks in the town. And as a consequence of all of the utility work, and the nature of the property, and the, the buffers that VDOT wants to put in to ensure that the thing is properly funded, the cost for this project has gone, in their estimation, between $5 and $8 million. So, they, there no longer is going to be a possibility of us getting funding from the TAP for this project, this project is going to be too big. Let me give you an example of one of the requirements that VDOT has, which is, makes this very difficult, and that is that the sidewalk, which would begin at the southeast corner of Gay Street and Warren Avenue, would have to match with the sidewalk on the north, sorry, the southwest side of Gay Street. There is about a three-foot difference in height between the southwest side of the street and the southeast side. VDOT requirements would require that that, that grade come down so that it's equivalent. So, the whole sidewalk in front of, on Middle Street, I think that's called, would have to be graded down, and of course, you'd have to have the ADA, which is about 5% inclined, so they would have to try to do engineering for that, and of course, then they'll have to have an ADA, which means that they would have to probably cut the hedge out, because the hedge doesn't allow the four feet, I believe it is, that you need for an ADA width. So, even in that part, and then obviously a crosswalk there, even that part is, makes it extremely difficult, and it just shows some of the challenge involved in this whole project. It is very discouraging. There is, I think, two ways to go forward. The first is to get an engineering study, and I'm going to go and pursue a grant to get funding for an engineering study for that, and see if that might be able to cut some of the costs down. The other is to make an inquiry as to whether using a private contractor rather than using VDOT might also work to bring the cost down, since VDOT is looking at this project not occurring on their schedule until near the end of this decade, and so they're building in significant inflation factors in their costs.
Can you say around six years?
Yeah, the, the last time I looked, it was 2028. So, you know, I do not want to condemn VDOT, I think they're trying to be very conscientious, I think they're trying to be very forthright. People who came out were very honest, and I think were very upfront, and I deeply appreciate all the work that they have done to try to support us in this process. It just is what, for us laypeople, seems like a very simple project, ends up being much more complicated than we anticipated. So, those are the two routes that I'm going to go and pursue, and hopefully have more information for the council at the, at the October meeting. In terms of the, the other sidewalks, they recommended that we just stay with the sidewalk on the east side of Main Street between Gold Street and Jet Street, rather than go over on the west side. And then, if we do extend, then extend between Jet Street and Porter Street on the west side. So, you would have one sidewalk which currently exists, and then across the street, if we go farther south on Main Street. In terms of the sidewalk in front of the courthouse, and one of the, one of the main reasons why I wanted to have Mr. Curry there, while he was not representing the board of supervisors, he nevertheless could give some feedback. And there still, as many of you know, in the process of figuring out what they're going to do with the courthouse, VDOT did say that if they were to work on it, what they would do is get it down to what they call brush concrete. I don't think they would, they weren't quite 100% sure, but they don't, I don't think they would necessarily bring it down, which means that the two trees, I don't know if they're crabapple or whatever, the trees would be preserved, but they would, they would do brush concrete rather than the brick. So, if the brick were to be done, we would have to do that in addition. Mr. Curry also said that the board of supervisors, either through the board itself or through its building committee, is looking at whether they need the door on the backside of the old jail, if they decide that they want to end the use of that, then they would be looking at the possibility of taking down that porch, and if they do that, then it would be possible to have that street go all the way up. Because right now, as any of you who've walked up in that area, it's very hazardous on that, that portion of Porter Street where we have the brick sidewalk, so hopefully we'll get that all resolved in the near future. Or actually, it won't be resolved in the near future, it's going to be resolved whenever the board of supervisors is able to come to some conclusion with the courthouse, and we have been doing our efforts to coordinate with them so that we can get a resolution to the sidewalk in that though. And that's my happy news for the first one.
Third option for the Warren Avenue sidewalk, to abandon the idea as impractical?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's kind of good for that same thing. And I, and thank you for vocalizing. Thank you for vocalizing. Because the only other option we have would be to, to put it on the regular agenda for the VDOT, which would mean that we would then have to pick up 50% of the cost, which is difficult. So, I am in the process of, opened up a portal with a local foundation, and had talked with people there about getting funding for the trail, and I've talked with another group, so hopefully I will have some good information, some good news, some truly good news when we have our October. And tools, the sidewalk in front of the courthouse. At this point, VDOT is claiming that it's in their right way, even though it's about four feet above the street level. It is above street level.
So, they have no obligation to.
If they repair it, they will repair it with brush concrete, and which we could, I think, working with county, we could answer that now. The question is, the county may want to preserve it, the county may want to do something different with the old grounds that they have there, and so they haven't come to a resolution. So, I'm happy to do whatever is the council's pleasure in terms of discussion with VDOT, or the council wants to go ahead and move forward with requesting that VDOT put this on their repair list, I'm perfectly fine with that as well.
What is the handicap entrance from the street into courthouse?
I believe it is through the parking lot.
It is on the backside, it's all ruined.
Any other questions?
Just have to coordinate with the county.
Definition of slow-mo, but honorable. Next, I don't know what we have on the agenda, is a resolution commending the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission on its 50th anniversary. The leadership of the commission politely asked those of us who had worked with them in the past, if we'd be willing to adopt a resolution supporting them.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say just a couple of words. I'm serving as the town council representative, or the town's representative on the regional commission. Rapid and Rapid and Regional Commission has been an organization that, a nonprofit organization that was formed 50 years ago, as it indicates. Its purpose is to coordinate planning for the district, the district includes counties of Orange, Madison, Fall Pier, Green, and not Green, and Rappahannock, I think it's the, and Culpeper, sorry, that was the fifth one, and all the towns within. The commission has public meetings every other month, and I have found, both in my term as mayor, and now working on this VDOT, and with other projects that the council and the services provided by the Rappahannock, Rappahannock Regional Commission have been invaluable. They have been working on some of the transportation initiatives that have benefited citizens in the county, they have been looking at affordable housing. So, they do not only seek funding for services to citizens of the community, but they also do a great deal of research and planning. So, it's a commendable organization, and I am very pleased to know that we have before us a resolution to commend them on their 50th anniversary. Questions? And if so, I would go ahead and move, and will, if the mayor will allow, waive the reading of the recommendation, and present, move that the council approve this resolution commending the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission on its 50th anniversary.
I would second that motion and agree with the stipulation that we, not agree.
No, I just, I was going to say, okay. You spoke my.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. All right, I R B appointment. You know, I would say that I can remember the days when we had a very hard time, I felt like I needed to work with the works and thank people to, to serve on the various boards of the town, so I'm very happy that three folks who came forward with the I R B without any cajoling from the town. So, we're looking at three applicants, those were in your packages. Any discussion, luckily, I had, we have two of the applicants in the room tonight. Any discussion?
I'm looking at, everybody is totally qualified, that's absolutely not, not an issue. When not being able to say hi to her, and she's already volunteering on the E D A, so I think it would be nice if we spread out the work that is going to be in tail. And Terry, thank you. Ryan, thank you. I personally believe, vote in support. I personally support Ryan because he has such close personal knowledge of working with the zoning administrator, E D A R B, over the last couple of years. So, I think his hands-on experience from the other side, the interview, is the only reason between the three that. reason between the three that...
That was a different town. The manager.
Keep it up.
For those of you who don't know, he was the mayor before, and he was vice mayor, and they just switched seats.
Any other questions, comments about the applicants?
I, as indicated, these are all three good people. I had a chance to meet Terry at our event, neighborhood party, back in June, seems like a year ago. And I would love to have all three on. And they all have different experiences and qualities, and I guess what I would say is I would support Ryan at this time, and Terry, I hope that you would stay around so that we can get you the next time through. So that's my comments.
I also appreciate the fact that Terry wrote a detailed description of what she had done, her qualifications, and I was impressed by that.
Okay, any other questions? At this time, I think I would call, someone would like to propose a specific name, and then they can vote on that, and if we're trying to work our way to the next one.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ryan to the ARB.
No, it's a good one.
All in favor, please, we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you by saying aye.
Can I abstain? I'm not sure.
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Ryan.
Or no one's...
Yeah. Terry, would you put your name on the list for the next time, for this or...
We know we...
We've got other boards on the town, so really appreciate your...
Nothing, I appreciate you.
Just a little credit. The next item is a very mundane addition to one that will ease the pain of our town administration. For some years, we've carried the requirement for three signatures beyond the checks for the wastewater treatment plant. Appears that we are not required to do so, so I'll be moving that we dispense with that requirement and require two signatures, which is what we require for all other checks that are written by the towns, that two town officials sign.
I second.
I don't know, they're making a conflict of interest.
I second it.
So do our contractors and service providers, I think. Okay, I'll make that motion, you second, was there any discussion or questions about it? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, then we have a very, very important item, which is that our town clerk serves for a period, an appointment of four years, and it turns out that those four years are passed remarkably quickly, and that we once again need to thoughtfully consider whether or not we would like to reappoint Barbara as our town clerk for another four-year term.
Can we look for life?
Do you want to sign that, Congress?
Awesome. Okay. Any discussion?
I'm glad to see that the briefs administration did get something.
No, I, and I will just take the opportunity before to say that Barbara has been a tremendous partner, at least to me in my time before elected mayor, and certainly makes this job possible for me, and I think makes a lot of the progress that we've had, where we've been able to make in the town in the last four, four years, or four and a half years at this point, three and a half years at this point, possibly. So Barbara, thank you for your service, and it's certainly a well-deserved reappointment.
Allow me to echo as the former mayor that same sentiments, that your help, Barbara, on many issues was invaluable, and it's been a great pleasure to have you here in your role.
She's not allowed to be.
At least not until you retire. All right, so in that case, I will call for a roll call vote for the reappointment of Barbara Batson for a four-year term as our town clerk.
Aye.
Congratulations. All right, now that, you know, all good deeds don't go unpunished, I also now have to make a motion to appoint Barbara as our, we're required to have a FOIA officer, and I'd like to appoint Barbara for that role. She deals with holding incoming FOIA requests and processes, and Mr. Cremmoni can comment.
Tom, so glad you did this. I was just seeing what was happening.
He has been our FOIA officer, it makes so much more sense for Barbara to be our FOIA officer, who can then, if she has issues, can go to our attorney.
Sets up a process that ends as it should flow, you know, in and of.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll do another roll call vote to appoint Barbara as our FOIA officer.
Aye.
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 All right, one last, very important question, is setting the date for our holiday party this year. It looks like we are doing the town parade, which I should provide a little update on that, Drew had a little comment as we go along. Drew and myself have both been serving diligently on the Christmas of Little Washington, made a great group of folks together this year. Some updates to provide on that score. One, I will say that the parade's going to be on Sunday, December 3rd. We will be returning to the traditional parade route for the parade, which I know is a concern for a lot of folks in town, we're going to have to see that coming into fruition. We're going to be reapportioning probably the layout a little bit, so that Santa will be down at Avon Hall again, along with some of the village of workshops, so to speak, and since we put the food vendors and other vendors will likely be in town. So set up a nice, you know, folks can come into town early, get themselves some lunch or whatever, find their spot on the parade route, and be present for the parade.
Avon Hall's perfect. Any comments? I mean, so we've got food in town, but there is some discussion, we had a meeting about an hour before this meeting, and there's a big desire to have members of the town, especially local businesses, perhaps dress up their storefronts and really get into it. Terry, would love to have you join our committee.
Yes, absolutely. We would really love that. So yeah, just if we can brainstorm activities, things, I mean, food will be great, but if there's music, anything that can dial up the spirit in the town itself, so that the focus is more balanced this year. The parade will go a long way in that regard, in the food, but that's the goal for this year. Also, we'll be shifting, pick up and drop off locations for folks coming from town for the parade participants, which was another enormous concern for several residents last year, the drop off, so we've got a good plan for that that will alleviate any pressure on residents. So anyway, that's the update on the Christmas of Little Washington. Traditionally, we've held the town holiday party the following Sunday, which would be December 10th. I don't see any reason to deviate from that plan unless there's...
Is it true?
And then, so that will be the date, I would propose is December 10th, unless it don't have, I don't believe. And then, but I would ask for, who would be willing to help with setup of the parade town? Sure. We'll do that. Thank you.
Turned out it's not making high.
As I learned from the ice cream.
And what about you?
Yeah.
Sure.
And can we actually go where it's going to be, it's happened a little bit on...
Presuming that there's not a surge, my recommendation is going to be to return to town hall. I've got some creative ideas for arranging the seating in here, perhaps borrow some round tables from some local folks, it would be a nice return, and clearing out the pews and stuff like that. So that would be my suggestion, otherwise, unless there's a complication. Maywell, you can check that out.
But Jim saves a lot of the parade.
It turned out well.
It turned out, it did, it did.
I first walked in there and saw it was very empty, so this is going to be horrible. But everyone did a good job. You were terrific, jumping the centerpieces, Drew jumped in and did the things like garlands on the walls, it was very festive. But it was overcoming.
Yeah, it was overcoming. Okay, well, I think we have a set there, I don't know if we've got a lot of that in here, but we'll put the word out. For five o'clock, December, at town hall.
December 10th?
December 10th. Reading 5:00 PM. Okay. With that, I will add one addition to that, we may try to, you know, self-organize, try to do a little event, another little social event in the form of the holiday party, and then I think, since our inaugural celebration went over so well in this best of January, look to try to do an event around President, around George Washington's birthday everywhere to the border. Well, unfortunately, I'm not going to count, but...
How many I didn't hear?
I'm going to wait to talk to see what Trinity's up to, or I can miss.
Oh, good.
I'm happy to stand up on camera. Okay, with that, we'll, for the public forum. Yes, sir.
Gary Rachel, now back in town. I have a question to put in front of you and a couple of concerns. The question is, I heard the prim layout process for boundary line adjustment, I might have missed it, but is there a requirement for an advertised public hearing before the town can proffer it to the county?
No, no, it's after, after the county has indicated that they are interested in having, we'll get a volunteer, a volunteer at some point.
That happens before it goes to the commission and then to the judges?
Yes.
Right, okay. The concerns, and some of them were touched on by the mayor, and I don't treat the message there, although I know many of you have had good calls. It has come to my ear that there are some people in the county talking about a strip mall that's going to be in town of Washington. And when they asked me about it, I said, it's moved to me, I don't know where you put one, but tell me all about it. They said, well, West River. So, and I've heard it more than once, and they may just be picking on me because some people think I have a hand in it because I helped with the DUD, and that would be true. It would be a wise move, I think, on the part of the council to get ahead of the curve, because what is going to be produced is not what many of us heard, talked about, it's not what's in the narrative, it's not what's in the free drawings. And I'm not blaming anyone, I know that when you actually start to build a project, when you start to build a project, you sometimes encounter things that really you couldn't have gotten to until you got there. But the, I'll give you a couple of examples, the trees, it has three or four places in the narrative, the trees are going to be preserved, to the extent possible, but it turned out it really wasn't very possible. There are drawings that show a beautiful manor in Creek with rolling green hills, and you know, it looks like it's going to be a wonderful place to go have a picnic. Well, at least looking back toward town from what will be the boundary line adjustment, that's not going to be possible because of what was required in terms of grading and everything else. I'm simply saying that when it's built, because of the density of construction, I'm also very concerned, we spent, I'm looking there because that's where the planning permission is at, some of you will remember the length of time it took till we could hammer a compromise on the entry from 211 Upper and Avenue, because it's such an important entrance to the town, and the landscaping and the stepping back of that long office block along the road. The architecture, I think, stays the same, although I'm not absolutely, I'm not sure what's going to happen to the glass atrium and the stairway. But the landscaping, the talk about shrubbery, the fact it might have a little stone wall that would have mimicked what's on the other side. If you look at where things are currently done, where they're getting ready now to start actually building out the project, I'm an engineer, but I'm concerned. And so to the extent that you all have more knowledge than I do, if everything that was sort of once thought was going to happen with the finished project is still in track, fine, I'll wait and see it finished. But we all took a certain amount of hits about our favorite post office. The degree of interest that both county and town people have in built architecture in the town exceeds, I think, almost anywhere else I've ever lived. But just be aware that what looks like it's emerging may not be exactly what some folks had in mind, and you want to get ahead of that, explain why. I think there's good explanations for everything. Second, mayor already touched on it, anytime you have people going to want it, you have raised concerns about what's going on, it sounds like you're ahead of that. But when I was at that end, there was serious talk about a second well, and there was serious problems with the reservoir that was supposed to be addressed, and that's about the time I left town. I don't know where you are on the second well, but I would ask you to think about that. I don't know where we are about, are we actually gravity fed system from the reservoir, or are we from the pump head, I don't know. But before you get new taps from Rush River, anything that needs to be discovered, anything that needs to be shared with the town, it would be good, again, to be ahead of that, because if you bring on new users and something goes wrong, then the argument's going to be, see, we told you, you weren't ready to add anything to the system. Seward sent in some, did we, did the town ever get an outside objective written assessment of what that facility maximum treatment is? I don't know how they measure flushes, I guess, or, I don't know, whatever it is.
Gallon.
Gallon. Where we are currently, optimal is always about 70, 80%, but I've heard all sorts of numbers through the years about what it was built to be, what we were currently at, what we had when Rush River came on. I would just hope that you have, not that I have any concern, but current management, but it would be good to have an objective outside engineer send you a letter, so that if you ever need, you can say, look, we did our due diligence, we were sure of what we were getting into. Town is changing, and there's lots of comment in the county and in town about the way Little Washington's changed in the last few years. Pre-put, post-put. Once Rush River is open, once boundary line comes up for a public hearing, once things come online, once the inn starts moving again forward, to the extent that the council can be ahead of that curve, have your narrative out there. It makes it easier for the rest of us to want to defend the town and the council than if it looks like it crept up or you were hiding things from folks. Done, thank you.
Any other comments? I will take a moment just to talk a little bit about some of the things that Mr. Rachel raised, the record. So I meet relatively routinely with the Rush River post, there has been no deviation in the plan, as it was proposed. There may be with the retaining walls and how they eventually mask that, that still has to be worked out as they completely decide. In fact, we, I signed off on a plan along with Steve about the landscaping, which would actually be slightly improved from what was originally in the drawings that we saw many, many months ago, especially along Lake Plaine and in part of the building there. A lot of back and forth with VDOT to figure out exactly how extensive the plantings can be as you're coming into town, but certainly very, very conscious of that particular scenario. But we talk routinely, there's, I think, I'm not aware of any current plans or questions about deviating from the last set of drawings that we saw, the course council or artist renderings, and I don't think we have any, have any update, but would you be in from that?
Just made a comment that Rush River does when they have the slight exchange, comes back to the ARB, for instance, they're going with the application for considering next week, where they have a slight adjustment on their windows, and they're very conscious.
I'm not so concerned about the built environments, I'm glad to hear that when finished, the landscaping will be as advertised.
It will be as advertised for.
That's great.
Yes, mayor, I have a, I know a lot of projects where they will do an artist rendering even before they have gotten to a full exploration of what they're going to have on site. And that artist rendering that was done, which incorporated both the part that is in the county that will be coming into the town, was very expansive and very beautiful, and unfortunately it was published widely. But unfortunately, that's going to be slightly different than what is... But unfortunately, that's going to be slightly different than what is on the architectural plans that the council and the public have to see. And I think part of it is that an artist doesn't have an engineering background, and so they draw this beautiful thing. I think what is going to come out, it's still going to be beautiful, it's going to have the intent of having some public spaces, some walkways, and know that is part of the desire of the owner or the organization that owns the property. But it's not going to look like the artist rendering, and you are correct on that. But I think that artist rendering was done well before you even had a final sense of what was going to be on that property. But I appreciate your comments, and I'm just, somehow we need to let people recognize that an artist rendering is going to be different.
The rendering is more a dream, it's an idea, it's a concept, and they said that. But people have seen that so much, that I'm just concerned that the finished project, clearly it's going to be built to plan, because all sorts of people are making sure of that. But you just have a public perception that is going to have to be dialed back a little bit.
Admittedly, I woke up in town first morning after they started clearing, I literally spilled my coffee all over the floor of the car.
Hope it wasn't too hot.
I was surprised, but, yeah, I mean, obviously, it won't be exactly what one might conjure as an artist, but the planting plans that I presented with.
I realize I'm on board, but do you have any idea about what I can see the date for the food picking? There's all sorts of dates out there in the community.
Not a lot there.
I've seen that if you look, it looks like the footers have been set.
Right.
So that's a very good sign.
But one that's pealing, we're cutting on March 4th, and anytime if someone says, I say, hey, look, we don't know what the winter's going to be like, we know, there's a lot of uncertainty, let's not get people all jacked up about these dates specific. But that's out there, too.
Too early to set a date. Yes. And then, on the water and the water system, the sewer system, and I don't have it at my fingertips yet, previously had a book, our book with the sewer system. We're in the process of having a review done of the water system. The well is admittedly one of those things that's in our long-term planning, but does not appear to be a critical factor, whereas all these other things that we've been addressing first, you know, it was the, first the meters, then the valves, then we'll, then that's next, the tanks in good shape, some of the work we did this summer allows to isolate that. In fact, the question we had about gravity is, we are feeding the town on gravity, we're using the system the way it was designed rather than the way it's been previously discussed. So we're using the service line to protect the town.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if there's one more thing I can add, just something that you said, the question's about the third well. We have two wells now, as are required. The town council's concern is that the two wells may be working off the same aquifer.
Are they both at the same site?
They're near each other, but they're not on the exact...
They're not the exact same spot.
They're not adjacent to each other, but there is an assumption that they may be on the same aquifer, which is why we want to be safe and have a third well developed.
Thank you, that's interesting.
Was there anything else, Gary, on this?
No, and as I said, your comments earlier, these reviews couldn't come at a better time, because they really will, to the extent that anything, I'm just going to tell you what's out there, because they will always send you your face. I'm likely, see, this is just one more piece of evidence, because the county's in the town, and if they can't service the county, then the county has to do the next step and make noise about how the town should exist, because they're not competent to provide water or service to the county perhaps. Now, I don't put any names to this, the comments, I don't need to, but it's a season of elections, it's a season of people turning up, the people, folk. So to the extent you guys can have the minutes that these reviews are being done, that you're on top of it, the repairs are being made, that you're fully competent to provide the first two things that you just thought I was to do, water and sewer, then you're in good shape. But I've been where you are, and it's very hard when someone comes to public media and starts saying things, especially getting the newspaper. I don't know how that happens. But then you're kind of on the defensive, and I don't want you to ever feel that, because I'm very proud of this town and what the council does. And to the extent I can be an advocate, I want to be, and so I just, you can say nothing, you have fun, tell your story, set a narrative.
And we thank you, sir.
That, I will close the public forum, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye, we are adjourned.